Now it is.
There we go. We will call the meeting of the Planning Commission for July 25, 2018. Could we have a roll call and determination of quorum?
Chairman Satler. Vice Chair Borders.
Present.
Commissioner Espine.
Here.
Commissioner Monray.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Commissioner Stoll.
Here.
Commissioner Tingle.
Here.
A quorum's present.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which this stands, what a nation under our own individual with liberty and justice for all. Public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matters that may not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none, for possible action, review and approval of the minutes from June 27, 2018? Any changes or modifications or...
Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Commissioner Tingle, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. Modification of agenda. Is there any need for a modification or anything? I think we are going to on the nomination or election thing.
Yeah, thank you. For items F, the other action items that relate to the election of the chair and vice chair, actually your bylaws say that your first action after the public hearing item should be that. So then we'll, so if we switch F2 and F1 and F2 and just flip those.
We'll go to the nomination and then we'll go back and change.
And change the by, and address the bylaw. Yes.
E1, AB-18-094, for possible action to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding an application from Carson City for abandonment up to 20-foot-wide public egress easement on Ash Canyon Road to Wellington South, then north on Wellington West, turning west and ending on the southwest corner of Lot 12 of Wellington Crescent subdivision.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Borders.
NRS 281A420 requires that I disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying comment. In my private, I am, in my private commitment, I am a homeowner of the Wellington Crescent Property Owners Association, which is a homeowners' association to which the property proposed to be abandoned should, would be vacated. In addition, I'm also, I also own a home within the Wellington Crescent subdivision because of my continuing relationship with the homeowners' association, which may benefit from this abandonment, and also because I have a pecuniary interest in my real, in my real property, which is located within the subdivision governed by the homeowners' association. I believe I have a conflict of interest and therefore will not be voting on this matter.
Thank you, sir. Nothing worse than pecuniary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The subject easement was recorded in 1992 to allow the public a means of ingress and egress to Ash Canyon. Per the terms of the easement, the easement was to be rescinded and revoked when an additional means of ingress and egress was dedicated to allow the public access to Ash Canyon. The alternative access was secured in 2003. The easement to be abandoned is superimposed on a 50-foot-wide private access easement. So the action of the abandonment before you today will not affect that existing private access easement. The Board of Supervisors has the authority to abandon of right of way. The Planning Commission reviews the request against the seven required findings and makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. In the staff report, the staff has reviewed those seven required findings and was able to make each of them in the affirmative and is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. The city's real property manager, Stephanie Hicks, is present and is technically the applicant, and I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Questions for staff? Seeing none. Would the applicant like to come forward? For the record, if you'd state your name for us, please.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager for Carson City. I wanted to just take an opportunity to let you know we have reviewed the conditions of staff and we accept and agree to those. The city really considers this to just be a cleanup of something that occurred in the past. You know, in 2003, the new easement was provided and those improvements have been constructed, and so we'd just like to take care of this for the property owners. It's my understanding that the homeowners' association has also had the opportunity to review the application and that there were no, no opposition to it at all.
So, understanding that there still will be an easement, as you mentioned, for utilities, et cetera, to come through there, but the other will then revert back to the property owner?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you. Bring it back for discussion or a motion?
Mr. Espine. I move to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve AB-18-094, an abandonment of easement application, to allow an abandonment of up to, up to a 20-foot-wide public ingress egress easement from Ash Canyon Road to Wellington South, then north on Wellington West, turning west and ending at the corner, southwest corner of Lot 12 of Wellington Crescent subdivision, adjacent to assessors' parcel numbers referred to in the order of abandonment, based on the seven findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Tingle. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie? Thank you.
I abstain.
Abstain? We want abstention.
We want abstention.
E2, SUP-18-095, for possible action to consider a special use permit to exceed the number of permitted freestanding signs, to exceed the permitted height of one freestanding sign and to increase the permitted sign area for congregate care facility on property zone multifamily apartment located at 1001 Mountain Street, APN 001-201-34.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The subject 4.9 acre property is currently being approved with a congregate care facility. As you can see on the slide in front of you, as well as on the picture on the front page of your report, the property has frontage on three streets and will take access from each of these three streets. The applicant is proposing a freestanding sign at each point of access, as well as two internal signs, as shown on the site plan that was in your packet. Internal illumination is proposed for only one of the internal signs. The signs along the street frontages will utilize external illumination. Per the existing sign regulations, the applicant may only have one freestanding sign, and they're proposing five. The applicant may only have 32 square feet, and when you look at the cumulative total of the, of these signs, it exceeds 32 square feet. I should clarify on that. The applicant's allowed one freestanding sign not to exceed 32 square feet, one address sign for the entire site not exceeding four square feet, and an address sign not exceeding two square feet for each unit within the complex. The, the maximum height allowed is six feet. In terms of the signage being proposed, I have on the slide, the, there are two internal signs. One is 28 square feet, and you can see with a height of 5.5 feet, and you can see that in the context of a person, and that, we don't anticipate to be visible from off-site. The second sign, internal sign, will be 12 square feet and four feet tall. The sign on Mountain Street is proposed to be 16 square feet and six feet tall. The same for the sign on Minnesota Street. And then the largest sign is on Washington Street. I used this graphic as opposed to a graphic similar to the others because this shows the slope differential, and this is the sign that's exceeding the six feet in height. It's seven feet, four inches, and that's because it needs to be behind that power pole, and although it's somewhat subtle, the site does slope upwards so that you end up with a taller sign. But I think in context, it will be fine. Development standards 4.6.5 allow for variations to the standards by a special use permit. As you know, the Planning Commission is authorized to issue a special use permit upon making each of the seven required findings in the affirmative. Staff has reviewed those seven required findings in the staff report, and we are able to make those in the affirmative. April Wojcik, representing the applicant, is present, and I'm happy to go further in depth or answer any questions.
Just for clarification, that is the Washington Street sign, and it's got the 1001. I guess that's just from the picture because I believe in here it says that there can be no number, or it's got to be Mountain Street on that sign?
The address of the subject property is 1001 Mountain Street, and so to avoid confusion, the fire department is requesting that the addressing on all signage, to the extent addressing is put on the signage, read 1001 Mountain Street, because if you're saying Washington Street and see 1001, you may think you're at 1001 Washington Street, and the address is 1001 Mountain Street. So it's just an issue of allowing for good response times by the emergency responders.
Then that would have Mountain Street added to the 1001, or...
Yeah, if they choose to put an address on that particular sign, it would need to say 1001 Mountain Street to ensure response by emergency responders.
And the internal signs, I believe, are more for directory because there's different types in the facility.
Right.
Kind of like the preceding buildings had a list in front of what was in the buildings.
Right. For example, this internal sign says expressions, memory, care, whereas the other one is the, the care center, so, and the transitional and rehabilitation center. So you have different buildings with different functions, so it helps you understand which building to go to.
So it's kind of to help the visitors, not necessarily an advertising. It's helping the visitors get to the right part of the complex.
Exactly. It's more directional.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
So when you were doing the, the study as far as the signage on Washington Street, I had the acquaintance or the opportunity, if you will, to take a friend to the Optum Physical Therapy in that building, and getting in and out of that parking lot is a bit interesting anyway. So I don't know as far as blocking line of sight for east-west traffic flow. Like I said, it's, it's problematic getting in and out of that parking lot where Lab Core is and where that Optimum Health is, and I don't know if this sign might provide any kind of obstruction for, for traffic. So that, that's my only concern about the size of that sign.
Our engineering department have a similar concern, and based on that concern, we have condition of approval number nine that says all the signs must be outside of the site distance triangle as defined on Table 12.2 of the development standards, and it goes on to talk about signs A, B, and C appear to be located close to or within the site triangle, and those correspond to the main sign maps located along the entrances to Washington and Minnesota Street and Mountain Street. So at the time they obtain building permits for these signs, they'll, they'll more specifically identify the location of those and demonstrate to the satisfaction of our engineering staff, and I should be Elaine Steven, who's right next to me, talk. Sorry. This is all, he's the brainchild. I'm just the puppet here. But, yeah, so they'll, they'll ensure that the site distance is cleared for that very reason.
That's probably part of the reason it's behind the pole, and if they have to, they could move it in a little further to make sure they can see past it coming in. Any other questions for staff?
I have just one. On Washington Street, it seems like this, the sign standard is six feet. It seems like there, some of the other signs on that street are either six feet or taller. And I, I don't have a problem with this sign. I just have a question about our consistency.
Yeah, I did site visit, and when I did my site visit, my focus was more on incompatibility and looking at adjacent uses, and so I was so focused on use, I, I think I glossed over the signs in the area, so I apologize.
They're not incompatible, and the signs are not unattractive. I mean, it's fine. They just, if we're going to get wrapped around the axle over a couple of feet, I think we need to start looking at all of them.
But if they're set back in, or if there's information closer to the building, can they not be taller than six feet still?
In the, in the staff report, it talks about the signs on Minnesota and Mountain being an overall height of six feet, but in the graphics that were provided by the applicant, it shows that both of those signs on Minnesota and Mountain Street being a height of five feet. So if they are going to be five feet, I would prefer that that's put in the staff report. I mean, these are monument signs. I understand what's going on on Washington Street, but my preference would be to keep them no more than five feet, but I didn't know if, if something's changed in terms of those graphics.
From the draft report to the draft.
Right.
The, the drawing that I'm looking at, for example, on sign D, it says five feet, six inches, and my guess is they're taking into account any grading they may have to do, but that's, we can certainly ask the applicant for clarification, but the grading may be, because you, you would measure from the natural grade.
Thanks.
Would the applicant please come forward? If you'd state your name for us.
Good evening, Commissioner Burris. My name is April Wojcik, and I'm with Prestige Care. And I think Hope's laid it out pretty clearly that we agree with. We do have three entrances, and, and we would like to have all of those signed, and then we also have two separate uses of the property, one for memory care and one for our skilled nursing and physical therapy, so.
Before going further, you've read the conditions of approval. You accept all those?
I have read the staff report, and I have, and we're in agreement with staff's recommendations.
Thank you. Just wanted to get that on the record. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner.
Can you, can you address whether, if there's not a lot of grading or difference, that the sign itself is five feet or six feet on Minnesota and Mountain Street?
The signs on Minnesota and Mountain Street are five feet tall. That's the, the height that we... Is it five feet, six? I know we went back and forth on that a couple of times, and that, I'm fine with five feet or five feet, six, whichever one.
Legally, they could go up to six?
Right. I would just, since we're being very specific on the Washington Street, the seven feet, four inches, I think, that we'd be specific in the staff report for those two other signs if we could.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's pretty precarious because our, our actual address is on Mountain Street, and, you know, all of the utilities and everything come in right there. So we've got, you know, the fire hydrant, the backflow device, the utility pole, everything is right there. So getting a monument sign or anything there that, and we, in addition, we've got our memory care garden fenced right there. So we've got the setback for that. We've got the utilities, and so getting a sign in there was pretty challenging, and so it has to exceed, you know, our required number of signs.
The building pretty much comes out to the street on Mountain Street.
It does.
I mean, is there any plans for any signage on the building at all, or...
No, we don't have any plans for, on the actual building. So this, this sign will sit out in front of the memory care garden fence, and then as cars, as traffic pulls in, there'll be a sign that says the expressions, memory care, and then as people curve around, then they'll come to the main entrance and they'll see the physical therapy.
Other questions for Commissioner Burris?
Would you be opposed to having us eliminate the possibility of putting 1001 Washington, Mountain Street on your Washington Street sign? I think that would be very confusing for people.
I agree. I agree completely with you. I, I would like to not have.
Just said no number.
I would like the Mountain Street one to be the only one with any numbers or address on it.
Yeah, I think that that makes more sense.
I agree. I agree.
So does that change one of the conditions?
Yeah. Condition number eight.
I think they gave an either-or option.
Yeah, but I would just soon strike it and...
Okay, I agree.
Any other questions?
So it shall have no address.
So eight would be...
Sign B on Washington Street shall have no address.
Right.
Washington and the other, Minnesota.
Doesn't address Minnesota.
It doesn't address, there was no...
Well, you can put it in there that they have no, no number. Bring it back for further discussion or a motion or...
I'll certainly make a motion if, if need be, if I can phrase it. I move to approve SUP-095, a special use permit request to exceed the number of permitted freestanding signs, to exceed the permitted height for one freestanding sign, and to increase the permitted sign area for a congregate care facility on property-zoned multifamily apartment located at 1001 Mountain Street, APN 001-201-34, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval, approval contained in the staff report with the changes to condition eight, which should read, "Sign B on Washington or sign C on Minnesota shall have no address information shown."
And I believe adding that the two other signs are five feet, not six?
And two other signs being five feet, not five feet, six inches.
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Borders. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. E3, ZCA-18-091, for possible action to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding an ordinance amending Title 18 zoning, Chapter 18.03 definitions of the Carson City Municipal Code to amend the definition guest building and amending Title 18 zoning Appendix A Development Standards Division 1 Land Use and Site Design Section 1.4 Guest Building Development on the Carson City Municipal Code to delete the restrict code to delete the restriction limiting occupancy of guest buildings to family members and non-paying guests and providing other matters property related thereto. This is a continuation from our last meeting that a couple of our members were not here, so we wanted to make sure we further discussed it full board.
Yeah, thank you. For the record, Lee Plummel, we did have quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting with five members, so I think it's good we have the full, the full membership here to, to finish this discussion and make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. I'll just briefly go over what I went over last time, just some of the background existing regulations and what, what has been changed since then based on some of the discussion we've had. So the, the primary issue that's being addressed is that currently we allow guest buildings, also known just generally as accessory dwelling units, and we allow them in Carson City. With, with the restriction, they all have the restriction that the occupancy is limited to family members and non-paying guests. That's the current regulation. Furthermore, there's, there's other regulations regarding, you can't, there's limits in size. They're allowed in these various zoning districts. They're limited in size to 50% of the main residence, 1,000 square feet. In basically the half acre, half acre zoning and larger, they're limited to 1,000 square feet. In the single-family 6,000 and 12,000, single-family 6,000, 12,000 are limited to 700 square feet. They require an administrative permit if they are, well, no, they require, that's right. They require a special use permit in those smaller districts. They also may, if they're detached structures, may require a special use permit if they exceed those thresholds for, for accessory structures in general, which is 50%, 75%, for which they would need an administrative permit or special use permit. For, for each accessory dwelling unit, an additional parking space is required, and there are other setback height and design criteria that exist that's a little bit stricter than the, than the primary residence. So this is what we have in the ordinance currently today. So again, the proposed modification is basically to remove that restriction on the, the occupancy of it. But there are some other things that, that are being proposed in addition to some cleanups. But more of the substantive things are some, the first part up there is the definition of, of a guest building. It was brought up that they may be attached, so, so that definition, per that comment, the definition's changed to mean that they include detached and attached structures that may or may not include cooking facilities. Not up there on the screen, but in the ordinance you have, and at the suggestion, there's a accessory dwelling unit definition now that refers to guest building, because accessory dwelling unit is a more common term that's used, but guest building is used throughout our code, so if somebody's looking for the definition, it gets referred back to that. In terms of the development standards, so some other, some other changes, the minimum lot size. So we do not currently have a minimum lot size to permit somebody to, to develop an accessory dwelling unit in the code. You have to have, it's allowed in the zoning, it's allowed in single-family 6,000, but if, let's say you had a non-conforming lot or another some PUD that had a property of less than 6,000 square feet, today you could have an accessory dwelling unit. Again, to address some of the concerns that have come up, we're recommending that in no case are you allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit on a lot of less than 6,000 square feet. 1.4.4, let's see, what is that? The maximum size. See, what did I, have a little bullet there, and now what am I referring to? Sorry. Oh, I would also note in the, in the packet, you'll notice from this time I included more information, I included more, more information from the American Planning Association on accessory dwellings in general, so thought there was a lot of good... So thought there was a lot of good information that, thanks to Candace for directing me to those links that got to that, but I hope that was helpful. And also attached, the first thing behind the ordinance is a matrix showing what some other communities do, so I hope that was also useful to show what, what Reno as well, and this was prepared by Reno actually because they're looking at a similar ordinance recently, but it lists some of the other, what other communities in the West are doing. Minimum lot size, okay. So the maximum size, again, kind of, this 1.4.4 maximum size is sort of related to the zoning where you're allowed to have the 1,000, the larger accessory dwelling unit guest building on, on lots that are zoned for half acre or larger.
Half acre.
Half acre, half acre or larger, that's in the existing. We don't have very much, there's a very small portion of Carson City that has a half acre zoning, by the way, but this, this minimum lot size shows, adds that you have to have at least a half acre, even if you're zoned single-family, you can't have less, single-family one acre, you can't have less than a half acre and have the larger one if you have less than that, you could possibly have the smaller version. So again, just, it's relating the size of the building directly to the actual lot size that you have, so that's the purpose of that change. Again, 1.4.10 is the, is the portion that's being changed to remove the, the restriction to family members and non-paying guests, but I've added a couple of things there that are both related to occupancy and, and this came up at the last meeting to, to make it clear that they may not be rented on a transient basis of less than 28 days. So these aren't intended to be Airbnb rentals, not short-term, but like with any other property that anybody has, it could be rented for 30 days or longer. And then, as I mentioned, delete the non-paying guests. So those are, that's the substance of it. You know, again, going back, the primary impetus of this has been housing issues, housing stock in the area. We had, of course, the forum today, summit today regarding affordable housing and workforce housing. Also, this proposed change is consistent with policy that was adopted in our master plan in 2006, but wasn't implemented in the past and hasn't been implemented yet, but it would be consistent with that. So with that, I guess, let's, let's start by taking questions. I know we'll have some more discussion after we take some questions, but I'll conclude with that and take questions at this point.
Lee, a couple of things, and I think we clarified before. So the FF 6,000, 12,000 will require a special use permit to do this, correct?
Yes.
And I'm looking at this and, so I'm guessing the half acre is that SF 2,100 or one acre, two acre would be kind of where that all falls later in that statement. In other zoning districts, including SF 2,100, SF one acre and SF two acre, the size of the guest building is 1,000 square feet.
Yes, right.
Okay. We had discussed something about whether they were required to have a cooking facility. I didn't know where we ended up on that. I know that was discussed pretty heavily.
I think it's still confusing.
Okay.
Okay.
And the other thing to, on the owner, one thing I picked up out of here is the owner has to be either primary or secondary. Is that part of our code as well? Or can these just be owned by anybody and they can have whoever's living there?
What's the second question?
As to whether the owner has to be either in the primary or, the owner has to be on site? And I know you said these all have to go in per building code, so, you know, they have to meet whatever codes are necessary setbacks, et cetera, which would be controlled by the planning department, correct?
Okay, second question, was that a third question?
No, I just, you had mentioned in our discussion before, to clarify for everyone that all, no matter what happens, it has to be building codes. The city controls that the building is correct and whatever.
Regarding the owner occupied, that's not an uncommon requirement in, in some locations. It's not always, but it's something that you could consider and make a recommendation to require it to be owner occupied. That would certainly provide some additional limitations and restrictions.
I just like that aspect of it myself because that way, at least when you're, if there's a problem or whatever, whoever owns it's going to be right there. I mean, if.
If they are actually right there. I mean, the, my next thing I was going to say is that, that's hard to prove sometimes.
Whoever's on the deed, I would think, would have to be on the property.
Yeah, if, unless they're, say they're on vacation or stuff, it's just a little bit.
I'm not saying full-time, I'm just saying.
I'm not, I'm not trying to talk you out of it, but I'm telling you, it can, it can be, it's one of those things that is harder to, hard to enforce.
That's what I had initially.
Okay, and, and required cooking facilities. So I think I fall pretty strongly that we don't need to require cooking facilities because it's, it's, we've, we've had, we have detached structures that, all over the place where that don't have, that are shops that don't have cooking facilities. I don't, I guess we don't call them a guest building. Well, do we call them a guest building in that case?
Right now, the definition says may or may not.
Yeah.
And what Commissioner Boarder's questioned is whether or not you can have a dwelling unit without cooking facilities. That was the conversation.
Right, right. And what about? Yeah, so the question is whether or not you can have a dwelling unit without cooking facilities, but my other, my example was, I don't, I don't want to, so there's lots of people that have art studios and detached buildings and other spaces that don't have cooking facilities, and I don't want to make somebody have cooking facilities if they have an art studio or something where they don't. They also may rent rooms to somebody today and not every renter has, they may rent a room to somebody they share the house with and they share the cooking facilities with.
What about running water or whatever in the facility if they're going to be living?
Well, I mean, for any, so maybe this gets to your third point about the building code. So if somebody is, so if somebody is occupying a structure, it has to be habitable for occupation and if it's a detached structure, that's a bedroom and that's what it's going to be used for, it has to meet all the minimum building code requirements, which don't necessarily include cooking facilities, but it, it would have to be heat, water, insulation, yeah.
Sewer or whatever if they have that.
Right.
Okay, if that helps there.
Well, but in, in the, in the ordinance that you provided us and the definition for guest building, "A guest building may provide complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent facilities for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, sanitation and includes habitable attached or detached structures, which may or may not include cooking facilities." We're, we're saying both things.
That's correct.
And then, then in 1.4.3, we give people that already have guest buildings the ability to add a kitchen, which is fine.
Because they have to go to code.
Yeah, but that, that implies that if you're going to try and rent it out, you need to have a kitchen in it. So I, I just, I, I just don't think we're consistent and I don't know that we know what we're saying.
So Mr. Chairman, just so I can chip in, so I know that this ordinance is, it's a work in progress and, and, you know, once it, I guess, once the draft is submitted to the DA's office and I'm able to get eyes on it, so long as I'm able to get the commission's intent with respect to, well, what are the conditions, what are the parameters, how do you exactly want to define what constitutes, you know, a guest building, what are the requirements that need to go in along with it, then, you know, I'll make sure to capture, you know, the intent of the committee and get that into the draft before it's submitted to the Board of Supervisors.
So we should probably go along like with owner on site, et cetera, et cetera, and get a consensus from the group and then we find out what we want to add or put onto it?
Yeah, I forgot, I forgot my train of thought there, but yeah, for the detached structures that may, may, that include habitable attached or detached structures and may include cooking facilities. So the, the one you referenced about adding kitchens, that's in there. The modification to that section is only to make it read better, but yeah, there was some acknowledgement that somebody had an existing guest building that didn't have a kitchen, they could add it.
I'm not, I'm not objecting to that, but I'm saying that that appears to be counterintuitive to our definition. I think the whole thing is subject to what is the definition of a guest building and I, I think we've got a couple of pieces up there and I don't think we've got it nailed down yet. You know.
I'm sorry, I believe, I personally believe that a guest building, if we're going to use it as a, as an income producer, needs to have a kitchen. If I want to have a guest building to keep my mother-in-law in or my traveling companions when they come and visit, it doesn't necessarily have to have a kitchen in it. But if I want to use it as a, as an income producer or as a rental, I think it needs to have a kitchen. And I, I guess that was kind of.
It could just be a hot plate and refrigerator.
Well, it, but, so for zoning, we don't care. You may want to have one, but I, I don't know that we want to require one. You may want to rent it, somebody else may want to build a guest building that they don't want to rent. So I, we, we don't want to be regulating the beh, how people use it.
Question.
My question is, is that you said that there has to be water available? That seems to be kind of ambiguous. Are we talking about a sink? Are we talking about a toilet? Or what are we talking about? Or a hose? That's one of the other things.
Well, the building code would. Building code would specify the types of plumbing requirements.
So what's building code say now?
I'm just, I, all I say, so all, all I would say about, I don't know the building code and what it requires, but if it's habitable, habitable space that's going to be used for sleeping purposes, it has to meet the building code requirement for habitable space for sleeping purposes and turning, including ingress and egress. I'm not even sure it requires a bathroom because maybe, because.
I think it does.
I hope so.
Well, if it's a separate unit, depends on how they want it to, what they want it to be.
If it's attached, they might just use the inside facility.
Not all, not all art studios, detached art studios that people have, have bathrooms.
Well, maybe we should, maybe we're getting confused in our definitions and maybe we should call it what it really is, an accessory dwelling unit and just, you know, we can have guest facilities or whatever, but let's, let's talk about accessory dwelling units.
Well, and the guest facility references the accessory dwelling unit definition.
I think it's confusing.
Well, that reminds me where I was going to go to before. I think the way it's written now is because we didn't want people, or say we, but the city, whoever, when this was written, didn't want people subverting this second, this guest building thing by doing detached units and not having kitchens in there. And then, their plans show they don't have kitchens and then somehow a year later they have a kitchen in them. That's really common. We've seen.
Not for sure.
So that's why the definition, so I think, I think that's why that was written like that, that guest buildings include.
With or without.
With or without kitchens because, all right, you're not going to trick us this time and not put one in and then put one in later. I think that, I think that's the, so I, I get your point of it not reading right and being clear, but I think that's why it says that now.
And the parking space, does that have to be on site or would off-street parking be, you know, right on front street in front of their house be qualified?
The addition, in front of, not on street, it has to be off-street part, yes.
And is that one per unit or one per bedroom? I think we were discussing that. I think we left it at one per unit.
I think it says for one per bedroom in here.
So a two-bedroom.
Yeah, it's been, and, yeah, that's right. And if, if I didn't have that on the existing regulations, I should have. It's one additional parking space per bedroom, not, not per unit.
I just have kind of a, the owner on site issue. If you have, the, the house next door to me and the house across the street from me are both rentals. So what's the difference between that rental and this accessory guest dwelling? The owner of the rental next to me and the one across from me, the owners aren't occupying that house, so.
Because it's a straight rental, it's not they're taking their home and then putting a small existing dwelling part of their.
Tomato, tomato. I mean, I just don't think that we should be looking at restricting if somebody's renting that house and then the owner of the property wants to put in another accessory dwelling, they.
Yeah, I guess it would all work.
Yeah.
Somewhere it would be recorded who owns it, so.
My question on that, though, is to be changing the zoning to being multifamily if it's, as rentals. It doesn't, you'll notice in a lot of these, I'm sorry to interrupt, in a lot of these ordinances, they specifically put language in there that says that when you're adding the ADUs, it's not adding to density. So they very specifically made sure that an accessory dwelling unit does not count against the density for that particular zoning district. So it would not be in any sense changing the zoning from any kind of single-family zoning to multifamily. In terms of this discussion, I think, you know, that the, the split between what's considered a guest building versus a real bona fide accessory dwelling unit, I mean, we see this up at the lake because TRPA says, you know, you could have a guest building, but just as Lee's saying, you know, better not, there better not be a kitchen in there and we better not make sure you're basically using that guest structure to turn it into a full-fledged habitable dwelling, permanent, you know, dwelling. And I would think that the building code for a, a fully functioning dwelling would require some kind of cooking facilities. I can't imagine, but I haven't looked in the building code for years, so I don't know if, if it'd be easier to create, you know, either a, a different guest building to keep it as guest buildings or just to go and just say, let's just create separate definition for accessory dwelling unit and just make it very clear, keep the guest building language the way it is. I know it's a pain because of the way the code is set up and development standards, but it might be easier in the long run just to say an ADU is a full, full-fledged dwelling unit that meets building code, has cooking facilities. You don't have to have a full-fledged ADU, fine, create a guest building and you're not renting it out. But to me, I think if you're renting it out, I just can't ima, and it could be a galley kitchen, it could be a small sink like an efficiency unit with a microwave, but something. The, the other question I had was on the parking. I think it's nice in the back, 1.4.9, that there's some wiggle room. So A is, is talking about if, if the person wants some, some changes in terms of size or height or site design, they would have to come before the planning commission for a special use permit. So it's, it's allowing some flexibility in terms of people wanting to maybe have some height issues or, or wanting a slightly larger size or. My question is, two questions. One, would it make more sense to move the parking into A instead of saying that you need a variance for an adjustment to the parking? Could we not treat that as a special use permit? Because if I have a small lot and I have space for two cars and it's just me, why would I need to have basically three parking spaces when it's just me and accessory dwelling unit? As long as there's an off-street parking place for that one person. So I think, I think to look at the possibility of, instead of saying a variance, because a variance is a, is a much harder standard to prove, to say there's some hardship, but to say that it could be part of the special use permit to review at that, at that time. The other final question is, on Schultz Ranch, we know that they are developing some of these next-generation homes where they've got basically accessory units, guest houses that are built into the house itself. And I don't know, looking at the, the old plans and everything, whether those next-generation models are all going to be on lots that are 6,000 square feet or bigger. I do know, looking at some of the, the site plans that have been approved, the different phases of Schultz Ranch, that some of those lots are smaller than 6,000 square feet. So the question again would be if it's part of a development, some of those lots, most of them are 6, 7,000 larger, but there are some lots in Schultz Ranch, for example, and they're already building that model where it's part of the structure, it's a separate unit, it's one entrance, you take a right, you go into the accessory dwelling unit, which they could have for their relative or they could rent it out if this ordinance passed. So I'm just wondering whether, whether that, something, it doesn't have to be something to, it's, it's not a big issue, but I'm just thinking further down the road, is that's something if we want more developers to do those kind of units? And it's part of the existing home, it's not a detached structure, whether that 6,000 feet still makes sense.
Well, if it's, if it's attached, I don't have as much of a problem with it, you know, rather than a detached unit because it's all part of the footprint of the house. So if that were still, would they, would you want them to come forward for a use permit if it's under 6,000 square feet, I would think, but. if it's under 6,000 square feet, I would think, but...
Yeah, I have a, a concern, or a question about, you know, the, the master plan calls for greater density in the downtown area, and we know that a lot of lots in the downtown are non-conforming. Are we, we're basically saying in this ordinance, then, that you can't put, you can't increase the density in the downtown by putting an ADU on it? And I, I think that we should at least consider, in the historic district, or some parameters for, for, for what we consider where we want to have increased density, allowing ADUs on non-conforming lots, and lots smaller than 6,000 square feet.
If they come to planning and to us, I don't really have a problem.
Could we add lot size, as, as a, as a potential for a special use permit? Because right now, I don't know if that was the intention, but it says size, height. Could lot size be an option as a special use permit?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Ford.
When we, when we started this last month, the accessory dwelling unit, which was mentioned in the master plan, was not in the ordinance. So, we cobbled together a definition and said, oh, this, this guest building definition can also be the accessory dwelling unit. And from then, all our problems have erupted. I, I tend to agree with you now, that I think, maybe we leave the guest building the way it was, and go ahead and define an ADU as part of this, and that way, the ordinance and the master plan begin to dovetail with each other, and then the accessory dwelling unit can have its own definition. And then we can put the things in it that we think need to be in there. Instead of trying to make, you know, we're trying to make the Cinderella's foot fit in the glass slipper, and...
But, but with the reference from the guest building, saying, see the ADU, is that necessary or not? And I guess then, the, if the 16 that are out there, if they wanted to be an ADU, could come to us to upgrade and change what they have to, to make it compileable with that?
Now, what I'm, what I'm saying is, the concept that we had for a guest building is different than the concept we have for an auxiliary, an associate dwelling unit. They're different animals. Couple of them may look alike, but they're, they're different animals, and...
So, if you, I think what you're talking about, is you want to split out units that have kitchens, units that don't have kitchens. Okay. I think there's a way to do that. So, I, just quite frankly, I'm avoiding a new definition, because every reference through all of Title 1804 is to a guest building, and if, I, I think it'd be easier to still use that definition, but say, a guest building with, with kitchen facilities, and then you have guest building without kitchen facilities, that have different, that have different standards. And that's only just avoiding a very large packet of paper...
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, but, but...
Little words.
The reality is, turning out to be, an accessory dwelling unit is now part of the norm, and part of the vernacular. And somewhere along the way, we're going to have to address it, and say, you know, we recognize that there's an animal called an accessory dwelling unit, and it, it looks like this, and before, we had these other things, and they look like that. Now, if we can find a way to mesh them together, we tried here, and I don't think it's working very well. And I know you don't want to do it, but...
But if we go with guest buildings, and change that definition to what our definition of an ADU is, and because it says, guest buildings refer to the definition of ADU, we just have to get those two definitions in line.
No, ADU says refer to guest building.
Yeah.
Or whatever. So, we just have to make sure the definitions are the same.
Yeah, but then if I want to build my art studio, what is it?
It's not a guest building.
It's an accessory.
It's an accessory.
Okay.
We had one, not three or four months ago, who was putting in an art building, got a bathroom, or whatever, and he was used to, the lot, maybe changed it over where his daughter could live, or I think was the situation. So, we had to look there, because at that time, it was still, you know, having to be approved, so...
I think as long as we get the definitions, definitions close, and then keep where they have to come, if they're below 6,000, whatever, they have to come to us for, and planning and us for approval, I think we can probably accomplish it without changing all of Title 18.
Commissioner Tingle.
So, I, I think the confusion for me is, you've got an accessory dwelling unit, and a guest building, and to me, guest building is indicative of a place someone is going to stay, not an art gallery, or an art studio. If you have, if, if there's a way to incorporate, and, and not get all wrapped around the accessory dwelling unit, if we say guest dwelling unit, and an accessory building, maybe that can kind of clear up anything, because the, the guest dwelling unit means somebody's going to live there. An accessory building means, hey, I've got an art studio. Nobody's going to be living in it, but we're going to be using it for, you know, whatever purpose we're going to be using it for. So, I, I don't know if, if that, that would clear it up a bit for me, is that being, an, an ADU, I understand that they refer to it in, in other communities as such, but I, I don't know, maybe if they don't have the guest dwelling issue, that, that's just my take on it.
And again, our main challenge here is to, basically, to approve, will they be able to rent them out? That's the main change we're trying to make, so...
Okay, now, these are all special use permits, and they're actually conditioned on that ownership, correct?
Not all of them, unless they were a bit bigger than 75% of the house, or what it, initially, the ones that we approved earlier, they could have been built without even coming to us, correct? If they were 1,000 square feet or less, and whatever, they could have gone in.
Well, my question is, is a real estate agent, right, am I selling a house with an extra cottage on the back, that can be used as a rental? Now, there are, you know, hundreds of agents right now, and I'm sitting here, and I'm confused as heck, and I've been doing this for 40 years. I don't know, can I sell that without the special use permit? Can I put my kid in the back of it? If, if somebody lists the house and says, there's another building out there, it doesn't have a kitchen, but you know, it'd be a great place for your kid? You know? Or, it doesn't have a kitchen, oh, you could probably go ahead and rent it out as long as over 30 days. So, that's where we're going to have to get some clarification.
I don't think we're there yet, but I don't think we're headed there yet.
And that may be partially, I don't know, we seem to be dispersing from what the object we're trying to accomplish.
Lee, how, how many references to guest, where are all the references to guest facilities?
Through, well, accessory dwellings, I mean, accessory structure definition, so, but that's, we're already in the definition section, but it's through, it's in every district where it's permitted.
So, it's just listed...
So, it's through 1804.
It's just listed as a permitted use.
Yeah, right. Or accessory use, or whatever, yeah. Or conditional use, depending on what zoning districts it is.
But it's just listed, it's not, it's not like there are any additional standards for any, depending on, on a zoning district.
Well, there are, because you have it in development standards.
Right, but they are in the development standards, they're not in Title 18.
No, both, both.
Besides this ordinance that you already have in front of you, it would be 1804, which is where all the zoning districts are listed, and all the permitted uses under each zoning district.
I understand that. So, you're saying that it would be, you know, it would be onerous to have to add in accessory dwelling unit, or in, in Title 18?
All right, so, we can change the name, we could, we could do that. So, we still need, we still need some direction on what the standards are going to be for those.
Do we have accessory building? Because that's where the art studio and that would fall, is in the accessory building. And that the guest building is more in line with the AD, you know, this development unit, dwelling unit.
I fully understand the distinction you're trying to make now, and the confusion between these, where guests stay and don't have kitchen facilities, where detached, and they're guests, and, and whether or not they're attached or detached, and have kitchen facilities. So...
Are you, are you saying you'd like to take another run at it?
Not yet, because you haven't given us any direction as to what you want those standards to be, once we distinguish between those things, in, in the definitions. Like, for example, the owner occupied, are you okay with the other, with the other, with the other standards that are proposed? I mean, if, if, if that's the last thing, is definitions, and everything else is good...
Well, I think, you know, we, we had some discussion, because I brought up the owner occupied, and I can go along with what they're saying, I have no problem with that. That's why I'm trying to get a feel, what, what do we want in there as individuals, and let's talk about it a little bit, and say, okay, no, that's not that important. Kitchen, I can live with it, with or without a kitchen. I just want something that's going to be readable for people that are looking at it, and workable for staff, so, that's the main thing.
I, I think, I think if it's, if it works, and if it's easier to have guest buildings, or delete guest buildings completely, but if it's easier just to keep the guest building, because if somebody wants a unit for their relative, or their, their son or daughter that are staying temporarily, but if it's an ADU, I would think, if it's a real dwelling, that according to building code, it's going to have to have some kind of a cooking facilities, even if it's only very modest cooking facilities. But I think, I think it, it would be great not to have the owner occupancy. Most jurisdictions around the country have gone away from that. They have, they're not requiring an owner occupant on the property anymore. I think that was sort of the first generation of ADU ordinances that came out. And again, the other thing is that, you know, if there is an owner on the property, or if the person's renting the main house, you know, it could always be that the, the first person there, whether the owner or renter, wants to, to live in the smaller house, and...
Which is addressed here.
Yeah, it, they don't have to live in the big house. But again, I, I think if we can just have a little more flexibility at the back there, for the special use permit requirements, to say, if, if your lot is a little bit less than 6,000, you could still come forward with a special use permit, and, and have some discussion, and give some flexibility, and to, and to Paul's point about downtown, I think is a good one.
And seeing what we're trying to accomplish with that, Commissioner, I'm, I'm in agreement as far as the owner occupancy, because you may have someone wanting to invest in these, and has the money to accomplish and bring 10 or 20 of them forward, which is what we're hoping to help the housing through the meeting today and stuff with. So, by making an owner occupancy, then they wouldn't be willing to do that. So, anyway. So, on that, I will rescind my request.
And I, I'd like to agree with Candace, that I think that the parking, you know, let's, let's not be overly restrictive in parking requirements. You know, people are going to find parking spaces. And these things are probably not going to be proliferating in all, all of the residential subdivisions. They're going to be, you know, here and there, it's not going to be, you know, allowing people to park on the street if they've got two cars, is not going to be a big prob- I mean, people do it now, anyway, you know? People got their RVs parked in their parking space, and they park their car in the, in the street.
Is there, is there a parking requirement for owner, the owners of a home?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you have to have...
There's like two?
Yeah.
Okay. Right now, next door, I've got six.
But adding, making, or having a requirement for two parking spaces, if you have two bedrooms in an accessory dwelling unit, that, that doesn't seem necessary.
Maybe one per unit, possibly.
Yeah.
Or they can share if there's only one person in the house, you know, whatever.
Commissioner Preston.
Okay, I'm going to be kind of the other person here, because I like to play devil's advocate, anyway. But what, what you've done is, is essentially, if you have an investor that's going out there and putting accessory buildings on there, and now you're creating a kind of increased density, a multifamily, on non-conforming lots, in some of these smaller areas and so forth, there is a parking problem downtown, a huge parking problem downtown. It's going to get worse with this thing with this Curry Street thing going.
We were just talking about that.
It is nasty. Anyway, but even, I look at some of the things that, right now, I'm seeing some accessory buildings over on Division Street. The one gal has a, they converted a garage into a studio, and thank goodness she has a Mini Cooper, because she has it straddled, right there on this small little apron. But just because somebody is, may not be using the parking spaces in their house, you know, let's say they have three bedrooms, the law allows that there would be up to six people in that house. Then you add your accessory building, if it has one bedroom, or one room, that's another two people. So, now you have eight people in the, on that lot, and that creates a whole other different thing. So, I mean, that's just one of the things that, that I run into with rentals, and people calling in the middle of the night, because somebody's in somebody's parking space.
That's why when we originally looked at some of these, like down in southeast Carson, where it's five acres, or whatever, the parking's not a problem, because they've got plenty of places to put their cars. But would you start, and that was my concern at the last meeting, are we changing our neighborhoods by allowing these accessory dwellings? I don't want four of them, or five of them on my, I would rather not have them on my street, preferably, where there's a whole lot of extra people living on that street. But, again, once we let the cat out of the bag, so do we maybe look at it that this only goes forward for half acre, or more, bigger, and just don't, whatever? That's another thing you could toss around.
Question. Uh, thank you. So, to address the parking issue, I think what Commissioner Stowell proposed was to have the parking be included, so, to be included in 1.4.9A. So, does that mean that would be, that the parking situation of the residence would be, I guess, contemplated during the special use permit process? So, there would be a check on that? Okay. So, it's not just going to be like, parking for everybody, everywhere, on every street? We have a check?
My understanding would be that, if you have, if you meet the minimum requirement in the ordinance, that's fine, you don't have to even go to them. But if you want to reduce it, if you want to change what that minimum is, then you have to come for a special use permit.
Well, unless it's, you know, a single-family 6,000, or 12,000, they're, they're getting a special use permit anyway.
They will, anyway.
So, under...
Why?
That, that's the current proposal. That's the way it is now, that's the current proposal, so we, if you want to change that.
So, you're going to see that, right now, because the 6,000 and...
You're going to see anyone, any, any, any accessory dwelling unit in, in, single-family 6,000, or 12,000, will be here. Whether or not they're asking for any exceptions, just...
And that's, I think it's a good thing.
So, so, to your process, if they have two bedrooms, and only want, and want to ask for one spot, we would have to make that amendment to that part, so that they could, it would be part of the special use permit, and then, and not a variance, as she suggested. I think I heard Commissioner S. Swine suggest that the standard should be one, so that that's not even one per unit, rather than one per bedroom, which would be a little different.
And as I say, by bringing this 12,000 or less here, at least, because theoretically, they could just, without coming here, they could put a 700-square-foot attached or unattached thing, without talking to anybody.
You're getting a building permit?
Just get a building permit and go do it. They didn't, wouldn't have to come here, or whatever.
On the smaller lots?
On the smaller lots, if we don't have that coming to the special use permit, okay, we'll go the other side of that. A one-acre, two-acre can go out and just get a building permit, and put a 1,000-square-foot building, accessory unit, whatever, on their property, without a special use permit.
That's correct.
But if we don't have the special use permit, could the 12,000, 6,000, and under, do the same thing with a 700-square-foot building, without coming here? That's the change, you know, the difference.
That's not what's, that's not the current code, that's not what's proposed, but that would be the, up to you to provide a recommendation regarding that.
But by leaving it in, they will have to come here.
Yes.
Which, smaller lots is where I worry about what's going to go on there, and how it's going to be done, and I think it should come here.
Here's, here's a thought, to sort of bridge, bridge these two issues, maybe. Just like in Washoe County, if, if the accessory dwelling unit is being created as attached to that structure, they don't require you to come forward for a conditional use permit. Now, I don't know, I have to look back at the chart there. I don't know if it means that you're creating it within the existing footprint of that house, or if it also means that you could expand onto the footprint, but still, it's attached structure. But in Washoe County, they do not require you to get that conditional use permit. So, that might, that might be something to think about, as, as a bridge between these two issues, to say, as long as you're, maybe not even saying you're expanding the footprint, but saying you're creating that accessory dwelling unit, it's a separate dwelling unit within your existing primary residence, you don't have to get a special use permit, it's just a building permit.
But would you have it where if it was attached, say, to add 600 square feet off the back of the house? If it's attached, they wouldn't need it either, they still would need a building permit and be built to code.
It's just a variation on, on a theme. It depends how far everybody would be comfortable, but that might be a way to say, you know, really, if it's, if it's within the existing primary dwelling, or it's a very small expansion, whether it's 600 feet, why, why would you need to come forward for... need to come forward for special use permit?
Because basically, you could attach a 20-by-30 foot or 20-by-35 foot off the back. It's not a very big room, because that's 700 feet. It doesn't take much to it, to that. Discussion on that.
Does that eliminate the garage conversion?
Yeah.
It basically allows a garage conversion.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think you want to do that.
Why not?
Above the garage.
Yeah, why not?
Height restrictions.
Use your microphone.
I'm sorry. I guess I'd like to see it.
That's why we haven't come for a special use permit. It's on a smaller lot.
Yeah.
Well, no. What Candace was saying is that if it's an attached, if you're attaching it, then you, maybe you don't need to come for a special use permit.
Another way to look at it. I'm going to go with the consensus of the group, so...
I mean, I...
You just need to get towards a consensus.
The whole garage conversion thing, you know, people could convert their garages now, you know, and they might not rent them out. They might just use them for a rec room or something. But, you know, they're eliminating the garage. And what difference does it make whether there's somebody, a non-family member using that, or a family member using that?
Really, if it's up to the owner.
Well, I would be okay with one parking place. I think that makes sense. Just to say one parking. If you're going to have, if you're going to have an auxiliary dwelling unit, you need to have another parking place.
Because like in my, front of my house, I parked both my cars in the driveway. When I had another car, I used to put it right next to it, because there's room right next to that before the property line. So, that's doable. But I think, as I said, I was getting all twisted over this 700-square-foot. It's not a very big addition. So, if it's part of the main house, do we have a problem with it? It'd be in the footprint or added on to the footprint. It's going to have to meet sightlines and everything else. Does that have to come for a permit? Because it's going to have to come for a building code and work with planning and whatever.
So, if, sorry, if our intent here with this particular item is to go through this document and approve the changes that are highlighted and crossed out, and then any additions to the descriptions or definitions that are provided in this document, that is what we're supposed to be doing with this particular item, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, where are we? Because I don't know that we've, like, gone through item by item and said, okay, on accessory dwelling has the same meaning as guest building. Is that okay?
That's, that's what I've been trying to get, the consensus of the board. The first thing is, can they rent it? Is allowed, can those people with those punk buildings rent them? That's the number-one question. That's the biggest change in this. It's not, you can have anyone living there as a guest. I mean, the ultimate nice person who either had one of these, they really want to help someone, let them live there for free. They ain't going to happen.
I think what we're trying to say is that if, if you want to have an accessory dwelling unit, it's got to have a kitchen. If you want to rent it, if you want to rent it, it's got to have a kitchen. I think that's kind of what we're saying.
So, it's the definition of guest building that we are looking at. It says, guest building means a dwelling unit. And the only changes that they've made to the description or the definition of guest building was they crossed out, and which is used exclusively for housing the family members of the primary residence and their non-paying guests, and included attached, or the manufactured-not-considered, blah, blah, blah. So, is that descriptor for guest building okay with the accessory dwelling has the same meaning as guest building?
No, that's what we've been talking about.
Well, I know, but where are we with it?
So, my understanding is we've, it sounds like we plan on going back and clarifying that, one way or another, looking at the definitions, how we, how we do it and distinguish that. So, then what I asked was to get some guidance on these parking types of discussion and minimum, minimum lot size, to be able to incorporate those.
So, we have to move the parking?
So, I think we, we expect now not to have a recommendation go to the board today, but to work, to go away and work.
I think the feeling is we want the parking thing moved back under 14-1. Does that, Candace have, Commissioner Stowell? And it would be one parking place per unit? I'm just trying to...
1.4, 0.7 says that one off-street parking space for a guest building or multiple, like multiple bedrooms.
Mike?
Mike?
1.4, 0.7 talks about required parking. And then it says that one space, one off-street parking space, or for guest buildings with multiple bedrooms, one parking space per bedroom.
We want to get rid of one parking space per bedroom?
Per bedroom. Just one parking space.
Okay. Are you following that?
I think there was also a, maybe proposal to, in 1.4, 0.9 modifications, to move a parking to, yeah, to the special use permit, as opposed to the variance.
That's what I was...
Mr. Chairman, I think I'd like to add, ask a question for clarification, just so I'm understanding, I'm tracking this correctly. So, a couple of minutes ago, there was a little bit of discussion on the record about, you know, are we going to allow a garage conversion or not? I think I heard from one commissioner, sure, that's, that's a good thing. And I think I heard from another commissioner, maybe not. And then I think I heard from another commissioner, commissioner yet, that, well, maybe an above garage conversion would be fine. The way that dovetails into parking spaces, it's, I'm trying to sort that out in my mind from a legal drafting perspective, because, okay, let's say, if you, if you're requiring one additional space for an ADU, but then you're allowing a garage conversion to be converted in ADU, and, but then by virtue of doing that, you're removing an existing one or two spaces. How does that work? So, I just want to make sure that I have this clear in my mind. The other thing I want to point out, too, is I think it's good for us to have this starting document that, you know, that Lee's prepared. It's great as, you know, it's sort of a guidepost for us. We can go through it. What I don't want us to get locked down into is, this is what the structure is going to look like. This is a new concept that we're going to be establishing via legislation. There's a very good chance that when myself or another DDA gets their hands on it, it's going to look completely different from what you see today. So, I would just say, I mean, if, if you feel as though you're being constricted by what's already in this as a model, think of it as just a model and a guidepost and nothing more.
Carson, Carson City does not require garage parking, so that's why you see garage conversions, because there's two, we require two offsites, two, two onsite parking spaces per residence. So, if there's a driveway, it fits two cars, that, that meets it.
I think if we could go ahead and separate attached, because if we're going to do a remodel on our houses and add an extra bedroom, or if we're going to go ahead and convert our garage, that's a remodeling permit, and I don't think it needs to, and that's a building permit type of a thing.
You still have to get one right, but it's not a change in it.
It's not a change in, I mean, it's remodeling permit that you get through the building department typically, not, not through planning. What, what we're looking at is, if we separate that from there, and then they can figure out height restrictions, they can figure out setbacks, they can figure out if there's additional parking on something that's already attached. Don't care if it has a separate door, don't care if it has a separate porch, whatever. That would be building department. But if we limit this accessory building to what it is, it's an additional building.
Right.
So, I mean, if we can get past the remodeling things to add additional livable space that possibly be rented in, you know, that, I think that would help.
I have, I have, Commissioner...
Although I think, I think you still, you still, whether, whether it's attached, whether it's a separate building, I think the point is to, to create functioning accessory dwelling units. And it goes further to say, you know, it'd be nice to obviously, to promote this, to have more people doing it, and also, further yet, to have knowledge about where those ADUs are located. Because if this starts, I mean, obviously, whether it's Craigslist or whether it's apartments.com, that those bona fide ADUs should be made available to everybody that's living or wanting to live in Carson City. So, I'm just afraid that if we just say, well, yes, a garage, you could just create a, you know, upstairs unit there, but, but to have standards for what that ADU needs to have, so that it, so that it can be called a real ADU versus just a cot being stuck upstairs. So...
And if you look at the information they gave us, they said monitoring, some ADU programs have an annual affidavit requirement or other means of monitoring. I mean, that was just in the examples, but I highlighted that because it is something that is there.
Well, and it gets into the whole...
Comes to a code or whatever.
It gets into the big-picture issue of whether you want the market to work, or whether you want to start tying this into, to housing and community development programs. It's not to say that that could be a component to come in much later down the road, that the city might want to use CDBG funds to help people create ADUs. But if they're going to use federal or state housing community development funds, then you're darn right, you're going to have some kind of deed restrictions on that unit. You have to, as part of the requirement, to get those funds. But the point is, if you're letting the market work to create these ADUs, many of those ADUs are going to be rented at a reasonable, if not below-market rate. And, and again, it's, it's something that's, you know, obviously taking off in a lot of communities, and it would be a great asset for Carson City.
From both ends of the commission, we're getting, if attached is isn't needed, and or, but if it's attached in an ADU, it needs to have a kitchen. So, anyway. Commissioner?
Sorry, I have not worked on this, but I've worked with ADUs in other communities. So, I just, I'm hearing something. It brings back some nightmares, so I need to speak to it. Using different approval processes for something that's attached versus detached can become problematic from an implementation standpoint. What you end up with is if you have an easy process if it's attached, and a different process if it's detached, folks start doing things like a covered walkway and arguing it's attached. And you, you say, well, no, it's really its own building. You just have a cover. No, no, that's attached. And it just get, you have gray area. So, I just want to, as the person who will be implementing this, want caution you against that, because it does get difficult.
And along, and along that thread, the easiest way is for us to be able to tell them what they need to do based on the building permit plans, not for us to have to regulate their behavior later. So, if it's, if they give us plans with a kitchen, then we know what it is. If they give us plans with a kitchen, not without a kitchen, we know, or whatever. So, so we want them to be clear so that the plans they show us is what they are. We don't want to have to go back. Ideally, I mean, I get you're, you're talking about some of those things like owner occupied and that, and that would have to be monitoring. But the easiest, but the, you know, the easy, you know, just generally speaking, with all zoning regulations, we don't want to have to go monitor the behavior of people using these spaces.
So, do, okay, do we still want to go line by line, or just let them rent them? I don't know. I'm looking for help.
I have, so, a question came up last time about water usage, and then it came to Commissioner Preston, asked me again. So, I got some late information from engineering based on kind of the study they're doing now, I've looked at. So, a one-acre, an average one-acre property in Carson City uses 160 gallons per day in the winter. So, that's assumed, that's what, that's what you use in the house. 160 in the winter, 700 in the summer. So, the, which means you're, in the summer, so, and the peak usage is really what the critical, the summer use is really the critical path. That's the supply that you have to plan to, not the lower, not the lower end. So, remember that, 160, 700, that's about, so that, the domestic house usage about, is about 22% of the total usage with landscaping in the summer. And interestingly, then, we looked at the medium-density residential, and it's almost, it's almost identical. It's slightly less overall, but even with the irrigation in the summer, it's only, it's 680 gallons per day. So, it's only 20 gallons per day less on a medium-density, which is those 6,000, 12,000 square foot.
Three yards.
And it may, and thinking about it, I mean, people with one acre, although there, there's, it varies widely how, how much of it you landscape. There's a lot of places where they just landscape around the house. So, that's it. And also, the domestic usage in the house is very close. So, people are taking as many showers in single-family 6,000 as they are in six, single-family one-acre, I can only assume. So, so how does that, so when you have accessory dwellings, what happens then? Well, so there'd be a slight uptick in, in, actually, so the thought is, there's no, we have very few cases, and so they wouldn't be a sample anyway. But the thought is it'd be very negligible, because if, in one situation, if you're adding a detached building, that's area you're not landscaping. And actually, the landscaping is what has the highest percentage of, of water usage at the peak time. So, that would be, so any additional usage you'd have based on the additional occupants would be somewhat offset by that. I think, I think there would be, overall, there would have to be some additional water usage in the, in the long run, but I think it would be minimal. And like I said, at worst, on, on the average lot, adding a whole nother dwelling unit, it would be adding an additional 22% to what the overall average water usage is on that lot. So, that was just some information I thought was a little bit interesting that I wanted to share.
And we currently don't have a limitation on water use, right?
No. No limitation on water use. You pay for the use.
You pay for the use. So, it doesn't make...
It mattered, but, but it does matter in the, in the sense of the long-range planning to make sure we have enough water for all the available land we have.
Right. As long as it's taken into consideration. But to, to limit, to say, well, we can't have ADUs because, you know, they're going to, they're going to put a drain on our water supply, when we come nowhere close to meeting our building permit applications and, and, you know, under the, what do they call it? We just did it a couple months ago, the, you know, the growth management ordinance, you know? You know, maybe we consider, you know, ADUs as dwelling units for the growth management ordinance to compensate or to deal with that.
There, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Boras.
There's, there's not really very much language in here dealing with an attached unit. This is, this is all primarily detached. So, if we left it that way...
Yeah.
Well, no, because even the size limit. So, if you come in with the accessory dwelling that's within, you remodel within the dwelling unit or add-on, there's, there's the defined area that we would measure.
700,000.
Yeah, that we would look at the square footage. So, it would still be limited in size, the setbacks, is the setbacks for the accessory dwelling unit, even if attached, could not be second story and too close to the neighborhood and etc.
I understand that, but it, but it does, in the definition, it says it's ancillary. It's detached.
No definition includes detached or attached.
Yeah, it's subordinate to, not necessarily detached.
So, I think the, still the number-one hang-up on everything I hear is kitchen or no kitchen. I mean, do we agree they should be able to rent out their guest buildings? Can we get that far down the road?
Yes.
Okay. So, we've got that part done. Okay. We've been doing this now an hour plus here, plus the last meeting. So, the biggest hang-up, I, I'm, I don't care if the property owner's on-site. There's a lot of reasons not to. But I appreciate the input on that. As far as the parking space, I think we've agreed it should be one parking space per whatever it is, a guest building, ADA, whatever it is. So, I think the biggest hang-up still is, Commissioner Stowell, and I'm hearing from Commissioner Boras mostly as well, and maybe some others, the kitchen aspect.
And if I may, wouldn't that simply be, you know, with the building code, what is, what's the minimum required for a dwelling? Because you get into that same argument about efficiency apartments, you know, because the building code normally has been like, you know, minimum 200 feet. And I think in some areas, they've actually been allowing smaller units than 200 square feet. But whatever the building requires for a dwelling, and, and leave it at that, perhaps. Would that be all right?
So, whatever it requires for a kitchen facility in a dwelling, the minimum kitchen facility in a dwelling, if it's going to qualify as a guest living quarters or guest with... whatever.
As an accessory dwelling.
Eight, okay, okay. Well, the guest building is referring back and forth. Does that work? Hopefully, are you, did you pick, as far as what she's, I believe, saying, whatever it requires for a dwelling unit, the minimum kitchen thing, it could be a microwave and a hot plate, okay? Items we need to consider on this?
Okay, we've got the kitchens down, and are they going to have restrooms too, bathrooms?
Quickly to the ordinance again. So, we're going, it can be used by other people, that's taken care of. We did 14-6, the parking. And the other underlying stuff, I'm not seeing any major problems with.
Well, by adding into 1.4.9 or that area of discussion, given that it might change, but having lot size be a, lot size be a possibility for revision as well as parking.
And, and we would allow, if it was under 6,000 square feet, they could still request possibly to put something in?
Right, that's a lot size.
A lot, that'll continue below the 12 and 6, it would be lot size. Anything under 12, basically.
Anything under 6.
12 and 6 are all at 700 square feet.
If you have a lot...
If you have a lot size smaller.
6 or smaller, okay. Okay. So, does that take care of the underlying stuff?
So, Chair, does that mean we're going to, does it need, if, as long as we know whether this is going to be separate accessory dwelling unit, or it's just going to be fleshed out more in terms of still keeping the guest building? If we can just, I'm just not sure whether that's, if we resolve that, then does it still need to come back?
If we, since they go to each other, and if we're willing to take a kitchen in any dwelling unit, but then at the art studio, that's not actually an accessory dwelling unit, and it's not really a guest building, it's a remodel or whatever. If they're putting just an art paint out in the garage, right, they don't have to have a bathroom in the garage. Because what falls under guest buildings? Does it still fall where if somebody's using part of their house instead of, it's an office instead, I mean, you can use a bedroom for an office, it doesn't change the use of the house.
Was your artist, art studio, since I wasn't here, was the art studio a separate building, or was it attached? I have no idea.
It's not a guest building.
Yeah, I think, I think the art studio was here because it exceeded, as an accessory structure, it exceeded 75% of the primary structure. Or cumulatively with, I don't, I probably had it somewhere, it's cumulative.
Commissioner Preston, most of these we've seen were because they wanted to put in an 1,800, 2,000 square foot for a mom and dad or whatever, house behind their house, usually out on East Carson where they've got four or five acres, so. Yes?
Just for the record, I wanted to put it in that most of the CCNRs in Carson City do not allow these.
Well, but that's...
Well, let's hope that the homeowners in those communities can amend their bylaws, because I know that's, that's going to come up a lot, and that's, that's coming up in communities everywhere, to change, amend those bylaws so homeowners, property owners can start putting ADUs in there. But again, the city doesn't enforce the CCNR, so good luck on that one.
But again, Commissioner Stowell, you said, "Are you at Schur's Ranches," is there anyone else you know that's doing that as well, not be in our area? Where they've actually got part of their buildings?
That's, that's one of their models, is the next gen?
I'm saying, is this the first one you've seen of those locally?
I've seen the schematics of it. I, I don't know if they've actually built some of those yet.
I think that's really great and interesting that they're at least looking ahead on that.
There are examples at Genoa Lakes, and there's also examples out in Dayton that have them.
From our conference today, we picked up from some of those builders, they were looking kind of for possibilities of things like this. So, do we need a motion, or just basically, no, you'll bring back?
All that for no motion? Holy moly.
I'm willing to make one.
You can certainly feel free to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, or to accept one, but one is not necessary.
Okay. So, this will come back anyway, regardless?
Yes. That's what a workshop is.
I just want to say thank you to Lee, staff. It's great to see this moving forward. It may take a little longer than expected, but, but thank you, it's greatly appreciated.
Commissioner Stowell, I want to thank you too for last week, and Commissioner Boarder's, when we were discussing this, it didn't look like it was going to go much of anywhere, and we continued it so Commissioner Monroe and Commissioner S. Wine could be here and give input and have our full board's input, and it was helpful. Thank you. Are we done with that?
No, we still have...
I just see if there was any public comment on this issue. There isn't seen none. So, we are going to go with F2, for possible action to elect a planning commission chair and vice chair for a term beginning as the planning commission meeting of August of 2018. With the recent changes in the way the board of supervisors is selecting their commissioners, we had made this, we, will be, this will be to carry out the rest of the term for 2018. There will be selections made, I believe, in December or whatever, there will be another election in January, because we're going back to the old way, because when I came on, this is how they did it, was January, then they moved it. So, anyway, this will be basically for a term of six months, and then there'll be another election.
Could I, may I suggest, if it's appropriate, that we would continue with the existing chair and vice chair?
We had two minor changes there, if that's okay?
I have a question first. The bylaws require, give, give the chair a term limit of two terms.
This would be, this would be the start of my second term.
The six-month one?
Well, no, I don't know, there would be another election, and whether I could continue or not would be up to discussion.
No, no, I mean, if you are continued, does that mean that you cannot then serve as president? Because you've done it twice in a row.
You'd have to come back after...
Well, I, we'd have to look, I think, if it's like the, if you're part, do only part of a term, you could do another, if it's less than a year, possibly. But that's, that's irrelevant at this point.
I don't think so.
Whoever would be vice chair at that point, if it can't be done, would take over as chair in January.
That's what I'm saying.
From what I, Lee, I think from what I've read in the bylaws, I don't know if it addresses the chair, vice chair, it addresses term, that if, I was appointed in January of '11, so I, and I was, I was appointed and then put back on in July of the next year, and I could do another term because of the fact it's less than two years of a four-year term. So, I'm wondering if it...
No, that's not my question.
Your question is if you do less than six months of a year term, can you do another six, I don't know.
No, my, my question is, is the chair and vice chair are also term limited, is that not correct?
Normally, it's two terms or two years.
You can come back after a break.
That's what I'm saying. So, if, if you are elected to a second term for six months...
Yeah, it could be done.
And then we, we come back in January, you're not eligible to be...
Then the vice chair would probably move on to chair.
Well, I think that's terrible.
I'd like to make a motion to not, to nominate Mr. Sattler as the, to continue as chair and Commissioner Monroe as the vice chair.
I'll second.
And we'll find out, Commissioner, what the term, I'm guessing that's how it works, but I'm good with just six months.
I know you are.
Anyway, now we go back to F1. For possible action, make a recommendation to board of supervisors regarding amendment to the planning commission bylaws to change the both of election planning commission officers, i.e. chair and vice chair, from July to January to coincide with the start of the commission terms. Do we need a presentation on that, or...
Just real, just real quick, Mr. Chair, the, on, the bylaws are attached to the staff report. On page one, it's not a change, I've just highlighted the change that the board of supervisors has made in paragraph A1, that the terms, your terms expire on January 1 of each year. That used to say June of each year, so they now expire in January. So, the, the change now that we're recommending, or at least to be consistent with how the bylaws were previously, is to change your officer terms commensurate with your, the start of the new commissioner's term. So, so you'll, rather than doing elections this month, which is when you used to have new commissioners come in, you will do them in January when the new commissioners come in. So, that's, that's the proposed change.
Yes?
I'd like to move to recommend to the board of supervisors approval of an amendment to the planning commission bylaws to change the month of election from planning commission officers from July to January to coincide with the start of the commissioner's terms.
On the comment on that, now that it's done, in essence, too, with their moving back to January from July, commissioners coming up are losing six months of their term as well. Because you, and you two will be up in January where you came on in July, so hopefully they'll realize that as well, so. Anyway.
Thank you, just to cover a couple things real quick. In July, the board of supervisors approved the growth management ordinance, growth management resolution as recommended by the planning commission when you reviewed it in May. Something that didn't come before the planning commission this time, but from the past, a tentative subdivision map for the, for Schultz Investment. So, yeah, so this is diff, same fam, same general family, different property, up Clear Creek Road and Highway 50, there's a subdivision that was approved four years ago for six units, six five-acre parcels, and by development agreement, that's been extended another, another four years. For next month, at the planning commission meeting, it's on August 29th, we have a special use permit for a cell tower at 2750 Highway 50 East, special use permit for, convert the old, at 911 East Second Street, which is the old Greater Nevada Credit Union branch there, to a church. Special use permit for 2811 South Carson Street for a casino, which is going to be a transfer of a gaming license. That is, if you recognize that address, probably not, that's the former Grandma Hattie's building. And a master plan, a master plan amendment, zoning map amendment for Old Hot Springs Road for an RV park, and it's actually a property that was recently changed, relatively recently changed from commercial to industrial for a project at that time, now they're going back, and, but that's okay. And...
Didn't we already do that? An RV park on Hot Springs?
And this is a smaller, smaller, different property than that RV park. This is, this is property just to the east of the Hot Springs.
Oh, it's not on, not in the rear?
Not to the north, it's just to the east. Yeah. Lampa East.
Probably not. You can say they're two different, but probably not.
Yeah, and we have an application submitted for Lampa East. We're not sure it's complete to go forward and, at your meeting, so still under review and getting more information.
Lampa's been coming for months.
Yeah. And then the last thing, you know, I wanted to report that we did have, I know, four members attend the housing committee, the, well, no, what was it called, the Housing Summit? Which was really, they invited a lot of the, a lot of realtors were, were invited and were there, and also rental property industry, and it was just an effort working with their Health and Human Services Department. One of the things is just to try to get some of the owners to help them provide housing for, at the income level needed. It's part of the overall housing committee that's meeting to try to find and make recommendations on different ways to address affordable workforce housing, one of which is accessory dwelling units. And they invited anybody who wants to attend those housing workshops to attend them, so in the future, I'll send out that invitation to all of you, and I think she had something to handle the meeting dates, so I'll send that out to everyone. Anybody else have any?
Is that something, Lee, you think I should probably attend if I'm chair, just to show our presence there at the meeting?
Yeah, I think we have, it, I'll let you know if there's others that might want to attend, but it'd be good to have some representation on it. Yeah, I think they, they appreciated you showing up, they appreciate having planning commissioners there that are interested in there, so, so yes, I mean, I think that's a good idea, doesn't, if somebody else wants to take the lead on that, that's fine, but it'd be good to have somebody there, yes.
Is that part of the CHIP, the Community Health Improvement Planning Group? I know there was an item that was pointed out as a focus, and that was workforce development, but as, as a kind of a underlying issue to that, workforce housing was being considered as, as an area of focus. So, I didn't know whether that was part of that whole community health improvement plan that has been in the works with Carson City Health and Human Services?
I think largely it was started with, they mentioned with the mental health and whatever needing to help assisted housing, and it's grown, and to just workforce and everything else. And they meet at the sheriff's office.
Yes.
Had the first Wednesday in August from like 9:30 to 11, or 8 to 9:30, something like that. But it was very interesting and enlightening, and it was neat to see the, the early part was more just a presentation, but then when they opened up the questions for Lee and others and the people there, it was really interesting to, you know, hear some of the input from people talking about builders saying, "I gladly, you know, put some more things on my property if I can rent them, but I need to have the freedom in a number of years be able to sell it if I don't want to," you know, whatever kind of thing. I got one thing, Commissioner S. Wine and I were kind of chatting about a little today, and just want to toss out there is the possibility maybe of the planning commission having a workshop to where we could get together and share. We have new members that come with a lot of information and stuff for us as well that kind of toss ideas around, some thoughts with plans where we may want to look at, say, parking or other things, you know, kind of things that we might want to look into, and start out just with a meeting with us, and then possibly, Commissioner Boarder's mentioned when he was on the planning commission, they met like monthly, it would allow people to come and, you know, ask whatever. Instead of having to go through the full process, they could kind of come and get a fee, can you explain that a little?
Well, it was, I'm sorry, it was an open workshop where they could, you could come, if you had a project that you were working on, you could come and make a, a short presentation and get some feedback. You know, before, before hope beats you to death or the building department, you know, you could, you could at least get, have a conversation, and if six people on the commission said, "That ain't going to work," at least you don't have to spend any more money doing it.
Of course, they could go right to the planning department and ask that question without a fee, correct?
Suppose, yeah, supposedly, if they have time.
But isn't that, yeah, currently, they would bring it to them anyway, but, anyway, I just was, I don't know what the feeling is on that.
Would those still be subject to open meeting law?
Those would be. Those would be, but just our workshops--
So the workshop would not be subject to open meeting law?
I think so.
Okay.
I think it would be, if we're all here--
Yes, yes. It would be subject to open meeting, but it wouldn't be subject to noticing, you know, the discussion.
Yeah, we would make any, we don't take any action.
Okay.
And there's not necessarily--
But I think they're still noticing--
If you have a quorum, we're all gonna be together.
I think, I think it really kind of depends, I would need some more information on that. I mean, if it's, if it, if this, if there's going to be a quorum, and you guys are going to be discussing and deliberating on matters within the purview of this commission, then my suspicion is that that is going to be subject to the open meeting law.
Lee, has anything like this been, I imagine, we were saying with the master plan, they must have had some meetings with the commissioners, and they just do it in smaller groups, or? I'm looking more at this as an opportunity to share thoughts and ideas of the commissioners. We have some with planning backgrounds, some with real estate background, whatever, to just to share that info, kind of like we did with getting this ADA stuff forward, to maybe be the horse instead of the cart.
I'm happy to look further into that, but, you know, off the top of my head, I can't think of any exceptions to the general rule that if you have a quorum and you're going to be meeting on and discussing and deliberating on matters that are within the jurisdiction of this commission, even if you're not working towards, you know, an action, a quote-unquote "action" item, that is going to be subject to the open meeting law.
So how do the supervisors get away with their retreats when they take off for a weekend?
They notice it.
They do.
Yeah.
We could attend those retreats if we wanted to.
They notice it as a public meeting, yeah.
Okay.
No, I would see us as posting it as a workshop--
Sure, that's not a problem.
--with a general agenda, and, and where people could come and listen or walk in.
Speaking of board, speaking of board workshops and strategic planning, I think I've heard they're thinking about possibly, I forget the timing of it, September, November, I've, yeah, but anyway, sometime this fall, doing that, looking at the strategic plan, I think it's later, it's later in the year, but this type of discussion might tie into that, so we'll look into how that might help, either to you making recommendations as part of that, or, and then maybe subsequently after that. The other way is make you have, you give something to the planning commission that describes the strategic goals of the Board of Supervisors.
No, we did it with open space. When we did the land exchange, they actually was an open space, and they sat down with all the board members, were able to go in and do a workshop and make it, you know, kind of let us say, okay, great, there's certain things with this that we have to do with the BLM transfer, some things we don't, you know, kind of open some different things up, but it gave us a better chance to know each other and go through the workshops, so.
I would, I, I think it'd be a wonderful idea to have a workshop, you know, and maybe there are several things that certain commissioners would like to have on the agenda to talk about, if, and, and to let the public know what the conversation will be about at the workshop, in case people want to come and, and talk about certain things. I would, I think a workshop would be also helpful in terms of just talking about the master plan, and, and where we are with it today would be very helpful.
Could have like master plan and parking and whatever else, you know, downtown, whatever, you know, things that are issues to us, kind of get them in our heads to bring forward to the agenda, and then we'll just discuss them and, you know, kind of throw them around. Public comment? Seeing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment, I guess.
I'll move adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you all.